All right, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this November 19, 2018 reorganization meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those of you who are willing and able, I would like to invite you to stand and join Reverend Dr. R.B. Holmes for the invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by James Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Eternal God, in this time of Thanksgiving, we say thank you for grace, favor, and mercy. We thank you for blessing us to live in the best city on planet Earth. We thank you for this city manager. We thank you for our mayor and these city commissioners. As they go out, we ask that you bless the mayor with your peace, your strength, your vision, and your wisdom. Bless Nancy and Gil. Thank you for their committed service. They did it with grace and humility, and they built a better and stronger Tallahassee. Now, Lord, be with our incoming mayor. Give him your strength, your passion, and good health. Bless Jeremy with your strength, your love, and your kindness. Touch and be with Diane. Continue to give her all she needs as she leads this community. Now, we thank you again for this city. We thank you for all the families and members and friends who are here. Bless all of us with the Spirit of Thanksgiving. Lord Jesus, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So please be seated. All right, I now have the opportunity to acknowledge a couple of, a number rather, of elected officials, both current as well as past, and city officials that are here with us this evening. I'll call out the names, and maybe you can give a quick wave from wherever you may be, and then we will collectively salute them with a round of applause as there are a number of names here. I want to acknowledge past mayors and commissioners, including Debbie Leitze, Dorothy Enman, Cruz Johnson, Bob Hightower, Bruce Culpepper, past city and appointed officials Anita Favors-Thompson, Jim English, Mr. Louis Shelley, county commissioners, current Bill Proctor, Jimbo Jackson, Rick Minor, Brian Deluge, Kristen Dozier, Mary Ann Lindley, Nick Maddox, former commissioners Cliff Thiel and Jim Cruz, county officials, including state attorney Jack Campbell and property appraiser Akeem Akinyeme, former members of the Florida Legislature, Representatives Allen Williams, Marjorie Turnbull, as well as, I'm sorry, Marjorie is not here, an abstentia, Marjorie, and current state representative Carlos Guillermo Smith, and former U.S. member of Congress, Gwen Graham. Will you join me in giving all of them a round of applause? I also want to acknowledge the presence of the 12th president of the Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University, President Leah Robinson. I now want to acknowledge a few members of our community who previously served in this elected body, and I'm going to acknowledge them in memoriam. These are individuals who served this government faithfully and had passed in the last time, between now and the last time that we held our reorganization meeting. If you will bear with me as I read a little bit about each one. Mayor Commissar Samuel E. Teague Jr., 1922 to 2017. Mayor Sam Teague was born in Appalachia Cola in 1922. During WWII, he served in the Marine Corps, seeing action with the 1st Marine Division in Guam, Iwo Jima, and Okinawa. After the war, he obtained a degree from the University of Florida and spent his entire career working in banking until his retirement in 1985. He was the president of the Leon Federal Savings and Loan Association, later Sun Federal Savings and Loan. Outside of banking, he was active in politics and served a three-year term on the Tallahassee City Commission from 1962 to 1965, serving as mayor in 1963. In 1966, he was also elected to a partial term in the Florida Senate, serving briefly during the fall session of 1966. Later, he served twice more on the Tallahassee City Commission to fill temporary vacancies during the 1969 and 1981 vacancies. He died March 22, 2017, at age 94. Will you all join me in recognizing Mayor Commissioner Samuel E. Teague? And I beg your pardon, if there are any members of the Teague family that are here, will you stand where you are? Any members of the family? Thank you. Mayor Commissioner James R. Ford Sr., 1925 to 2017. Mayor James Ford was born in Tallahassee in 1925. Ford was a descendant of the William Henry Ford, and he served as a member of the Florida House during the post-Civil War reconstruction era. That would have been William Henry Ford. The Ford family later settled in Leon County's Macon Community on North Meridian Road. In his youth, Mayor Ford left Tallahassee and was employed as a steel foundry in Chester, Pennsylvania suburb out of Philadelphia. During WWII, he served the U.S. Navy as a steward's mate. After the war, he received a master's degree from FAMU and received a commission as a lieutenant in the U.S. Army during the Korean War. In civilian life, he was employed with Leon County Schools for 37 years and was the first black administrator in the school system. In 1971, he became the first African-American elected to the Tallahassee City Commission since Reconstruction, and in 1972 became Tallahassee's first black mayor and served twice more in the post in 1976 and in 1982. In all, he served nearly 14 years on the Tallahassee City Commission, leaving office in 1984 to run for the Leon County Commission, and he died October 11, 2017, at the ripe age of 91. Will you all please acknowledge? And are there any members of the Ford family that are here? Thank you. And finally, Commissioner Donald C. Price, 1926 to 2017. Commissioner Price was born in Birmingham, Alabama, in 1926. During WWII, he served in the U.S. Army Air Corps. He moved to Tallahassee in 1955 and was in the radio broadcasting business and was a founding member of Springtime Tallahassee. He served 18 months on the Tallahassee City Commission during the 1974 and 1975 sessions, completing his term of Mayor Russell Belvis, who resigned halfway through his three-year term. After his city commission service, he served in the Florida House of Representatives from 1979, my birth year, to 1982. Afterwards, he served six years as the District 4 Commissioner on the Leon County Commission from 1986 to 1992, serving as chairman in 1991. The city street, Don Prince Way, off Apple Yard Drive near the Leon County Jail, was named in his honor in 1992, and he died February 6, 2017, at the age of 90. Will you all please recognize and acknowledge Mayor Commissioner James Cook? And are there any members of the Price family who are with us today? Thank you very much. Now I'll turn the microphone over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great day. It's good to see so many smiling faces in the audience. I think I will remember this personally for a long time. I'd like to ask Mayor Andrew Gillum, Commissioner Nancy Miller, and Commissioner Gil Ziffer to join me at the podium, please. To serve on this body requires an inquisitive mind, a big heart, and an wavering commitment to this community. Each of these individuals standing beside me here today have all three in spades. Their hard work and dedication is evident by the many accomplishments seen during their tenures on the city commission. We are so proud of the positive impact you've had on Tallahassee and grateful for your many contributions. Tonight, we'd like to recognize each of you. I'll begin with Commissioner Nancy Miller. Commissioner Nancy Miller was elected in 2010 and re-elected in 2014. Prior to serving in this capacity, Commissioner Miller was an original member of the Economic and Environmental Consensus Committee, which created the first Blueprint Initiative. Blueprint has resulted in more than $500 million in investment in community improvements such as Cascades Park, the widening of Capital Circle, FAMU Way, stormwater treatment, and expanded system of greenways and bicycle trails. Commissioner Miller's background and experience as a biologist, business owner, and urban planner provided an invaluable point of view during her last eight years. Notably, her work resulted in needed amendments to the Land Development Code, formation of multimodal districts, development of the French Town Placemaking Plan, funding for necessary infrastructure and roadway improvements, and relaunching trial service in the heart of Tallahassee. And she has always been a champion of the environment, from protecting our water quality to creating the city's first solar farm. Commissioner Miller, with sincere appreciation for your dedication and years of service to this community, I would like to present you with a plaque, and I'll read it. It reads, "From the City of Tallahassee, presented to Nancy Miller in recognition of service to the citizens of the City of Tallahassee, City Commissioner, November 2010 to November 2018. I wish you and your family and John the best, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you."
Well, we have a long way to go tonight, so I'm going to be very brief and just say this has certainly been the highest honor of my life. Of all the things that I've done, this has been the one that has been the most, with the most, you just love it. You get up in the morning and you get to go out and do great things all day long. And so I thank you all for selecting me to do this in the first place, and I've enjoyed the last eight years very, very much. And now I'm very happy to hand over my responsibilities to a brand-new crew.
Next, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Gil Ziffer. You may remember Commissioner Ziffer was appointed in August of 2009 to fill the vacancy created by Commissioner Alan Katz, who was appointed by the president as the U.S. Ambassador to Portugal. Commissioner Ziffer was subsequently elected to two four-year terms in 2010 and 2014. The word that often comes up when discussing Commissioner Ziffer's accomplishments is advocate. A longtime volunteer, aiding the homeless through his support for the Kearney Center and his leadership with the city's Change for Change program. Through his advocacy for our senior community, Tallahassee has earned the designation of an age- and dementia-friendly community. Most recently, Commissioner Ziffer has been involved with the Independence Landing Project. For those of you that don't know, it will provide affordable and safe residential campus for adults with varying degrees of cognitive abilities. Commissioner Ziffer has also served as an advocate for the arts, engaging in private sector and community groups to improve the character of our community through art in public spaces. McCord Park is one of those examples of art. In addition, he has also represented the City of Tallahassee well regionally and nationally through his service as president of the Florida League of Cities. Commissioner Ziffer, I would like to thank you and Gil, who's here tonight, for the nine years that you gave us. We know it's a sacrifice, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. I'd like to read a plaque. And it reads, "City of Tallahassee, presented to Gil Ziffer in recognition of service to the citizens of the City of Tallahassee, City Commissioner, August 2009 to November 2018." Thank you, sir.
All right, so I didn't know we were speaking, but while I was up there, somebody told me so. I'm only going to bore you for about 60 seconds, if I can. The first thing is, and I didn't think about this until I was up there, when I was appointed some nine years and two months ago, my wife was sitting in the same chair as she is now, and I can't help but look at you, thinking how much has happened in our lives over those nine years, the impact that we've been able to have on so many people in this city, and yet we are still stronger and better than ever, and I'm looking forward to spending the rest of my life with you. So thank you for letting me do this. This moment didn't really start to impact me, because I've known for nine months now, I wasn't going to be on this commission until this morning, and I think the last day hits you the hardest, knowing it's your last day. But seeing all of you folks here that are so excited about what's to come is so energizing because through the process, those of us that know that we're leaving, there is this trepidation of what's going to happen next. But this city did a great job of electing great people that are going to do an awesome job and are going to take us even further. So congratulations to our new commissioners and our new mayor. It was mentioned the Florida League of Cities. There is no greater honor than serving those that not only in your community but around the state and also nationally. I've been a very fortunate man. I've made great friends around this state, but there are a couple people here that I want to specifically recognize, and if I forget anybody else, please, I apologize, but Jeanne Garner and Mike Sittig, my folks at the League of Cities for helping me so much, have the presidency that I have. Thank you very much. I am forever in your debt. It will be an honor to join the Past City Commissioners Club, based upon the names that I heard that are here. They're wonderful people. I look forward to it. I will say this in parting, that I'm a few minutes away, so I can't do it now, but if after this, somebody would like to buy me a drink or dinner, I'd be more than happy for them. Who gets this, because I am ready to give it up? You do.
Finally, I'd like to recognize Mayor Gillum. In February of 2003, Andrew Gillum was elected to the city commission for a one-year term, becoming the youngest ever elected to the city commission. He was subsequently elected to three additional four-year terms and then elected as mayor in 2014. During his tenure, Mayor Gillum championed initiatives that helped improve the quality of life in Tallahassee. His Family First Initiative put a spotlight on children and family issues. His passion for helping local youth led to the development of the Palmer Monroe Teen Center. In addition, he led the creation of the Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy, which provides local teens with mentorship and job readiness training. And Mayor Gillum also supported business through the elimination of the local business tax and championed efforts such as Domi and Iowa Avenue. Many will agree that Tallahassee is changing, and Mayor Gillum worked to ensure everyone could have a voice and literal seat at the table. Through the Longest Table Initiative, Tallahasians from all walks of life came together to break down barriers and engage in open, meaningful conversations. Mayor Gillum, I'd like to thank you for your service. I'd like to thank RJ and your family and wish you the best, and I'd like to read you a plaque in your recognition. And it reads, "City of Tallahassee, presented to Andrew Gillum in recognition of service to the citizens of the City of Tallahassee, City Commission from February 2003 to November 2014, and Mayor from November 2014 to November 2018." Thank you, sir.
I will be brief. I asked my wife not to come so that I would not be emotional in any way, shape, or form, and I've already asked so much of my family over the last two years. I thought one night off wouldn't be bad. And then I look over and I see Anita, who is literally practically responsible for that marriage. Because I grew up in City Hall, literally starting here when I was 23 years old, I was still in my dating years, and Anita would remind me a couple of times. She'd say, "Oh, you could bring a guest. You could bring a guest." And I guess I took it a little literally. You know, I bought a guest, and maybe a different one to every event that I had to do as a city commissioner, and she's the one who worked up the guts to tell me, "You know, you don't have to bring a different guest every time. You can just choose one." And that conversation led me to just choose one forever. And I just want to say, having grown up in this government from the age of 23 to now the age of 39, that I owe so much to each and every one of you. And because today is about the future and not about the past, and frankly, because I don't think I have the vocabulary to express the depth of my gratitude to not only you all, but to the hard-working members of this government, the city employees and civil servants who get up every single day, oftentimes without the credit. They do the difficult work and the difficult task of making this community look as good as she is. And so I guess if I had a tribute, aside from those of you who gave me the opportunity to grow up under your eyes, it would be to thank those city employees, those city workers, both past and present, who allowed us to take the good credit for the great and amazing work that they did to make this an all-America city. I still believe that we live in the best place in the universe, and I'm looking forward to this next commission taking us to even higher heights. So God bless y'all, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
At this point, I'd like to invite my colleagues Cassandra Jackson, the city attorney, and Jim Cook, the treasurer clerk, to come down and begin the swearing-in ceremony for our newly-elected.
Well, it is my pleasure to have the opportunity to swear in my new bosses. And, you know, they have demonstrated a commitment to public service long before now, so it is indeed an honor to be able to have the opportunity to swear them in. And so I'm going to start first with Mr. John Daly and ask that he would come with his family and stand next to me. And if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John E. Daly
I, John E. Daly
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend
The Constitution and Government of the United States
The Constitution and Government of the United States
The State of Florida
The State of Florida
And the City of Tallahassee
And the City of Tallahassee
That I am duly qualified to hold office
That I am duly qualified to hold office
Under the Constitution of the State of Florida
Under the Constitution of the State of Florida
And that I will well and faithfully perform
And that I will well and faithfully perform
The duties of the Office of Mayor
The duties of the Office of Mayor
On which I am about to enter, so help me God
Which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, it's my privilege to present a certificate of election to Mayor John Daly. It's also my privilege, I believe, to be the first to officially call you Mayor John Daly. Those who've campaigned for elective office know quite well that campaign, that process is not easy, but it's rewarding, especially for those who care about their community and enjoy interactions with their citizens. Similarly, serving as mayor won't necessarily be easy, but it will be imminently rewarding for someone who loves this city and enjoys working with its citizens to build an even brighter future. So as you complete your election process and begin serving as mayor, I'll read this certificate of election. The undersigned as City Treasurer and Clerk does hereby certify that John E. Daly has been duly elected by municipal election to the Office of Mayor for a term of four years to begin upon taking the oath of office at 5:00 p.m. on November 19, 2018, at which time the powers, duties, and responsibilities of the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, as defined by the laws of the State of Florida and the charter and ordinances of said city, will be assumed, given under my hand and the official seal of the City of Tallahassee, Florida. Congratulations.
Now, if we could have Mr. Jeremy Matlow to come forward. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jeremy Matlow
I, Jeremy Matlow
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend
The Constitution and Government of the United States
The Constitution of the Government of the United States
The State of Florida
The State of Florida
And the City of Tallahassee
And the City of Tallahassee
That I am duly qualified to hold office
That I am duly qualified to hold office
Under the Constitution of the State of Florida
Under the Constitution of the State of Florida
And that I will well and faithfully perform
And that I will well and faithfully perform
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
...the duties of the Office of City Commissioner...
The duties of the Office of City Commissioner.
...on which I am about to enter, so help me God.
On which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations.
As I stated a moment ago, campaigning for and serving in elected office is not for the faint of heart, but it is for those who have a heart, a heart for the community and for the individuals who make up that community. We've been fortunate to have a long history of such people serving the City of Tallahassee, as we've seen earlier this evening. Some of those moved here and fell in love with it. Others, like Commissioner Matlow, grew up here and know it as home. As commissioners, they all appreciate what we have while wanting to make Tallahassee an even better place to call home. It's now my privilege to present this certificate of election, adding Commissioner Jeremy Matlow to our strong history. The undersigned-as-city Treasurer and Clerk does hereby certify that Jeremy Matlow has been duly elected by municipal election to the Office of City Commissioner for a term of four years to begin upon taking the oath of office at 5:00 p.m. on November 19, 2018, at which time the powers, duties, and responsibilities of a City Commissioner of the City of Tallahassee, as defined by the laws of the State of Florida and the charter and ordinances of said city, will be assumed, given under my hand and the official seal of the City of Tallahassee, Florida. Congratulations.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Diane Williams-Cox...
I, Diane Williams-Cox...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and the Government of the United States...
The Constitution and the Government of the United States.
...the State of Florida...
The State of Florida.
...and the City of Tallahassee...
And the City of Tallahassee.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the State of Florida...
Under the Constitution of the State of Florida.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
...the duties of the Office of City Commissioner...
The duties of the Office of City Commissioner.
...on which I am about to enter, so help me God.
On which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Those who run for the Office of City Commissioner in Tallahassee aren't elected by one neighborhood. They're elected by all the voters in all the neighborhoods. In the same vein, when they take office, they begin serving all of the neighborhoods to make what is good even better. As a City Commissioner, one serves the businesses, large and small, and the citizens, young and old, who make up this neighborhood we call Tallahassee. As she begins her term of service to our city, it is my privilege to present this certificate of election to Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. A City Treasurer and Clerk does hereby certify that Diane Williams-Cox has been duly elected by municipal election to the Office of City Commissioner for a term of four years to begin upon taking the oath of office at 5:00 p.m. on November 19, 2018, at which time the powers, duties, and responsibilities of a City Commissioner of the City of Tallahassee, as defined by the laws of the State of Florida and the charter and ordinances of said city, will be assumed, given under my hand and the official seal of the City of Tallahassee, Florida. Congratulations.
today, and that is the election of the Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Tallahassee City Commission. Commissioner Curtis Richardson, you have served as Mayor Pro Tem with honor and distinction for the past year. Thank you very much, and I would like to call on you for a motion for the next Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Tallahassee Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been the tradition of this commission to have the Commissioner with the most seniority serve as the Mayor Pro Tem. And with that in mind, I would like, because of his seniority on the commission, to move that Commissioner Scott Maddox serve as our Mayor Pro Tem for the upcoming year. Mr. Mayor.
There is a motion on the table for Commissioner Scott Maddox to serve as the Mayor Pro Tem of the City Commission. Is there a second to the motion on the table, properly seconded by the audience, it seems, by Commissioner Williams-Cox? Commissioner Maddox, thank you for offering yourself in leadership on this commission. We certainly do appreciate it. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Before we adjourn for the reception that we're going to have in the Mezzanine Level, I would like to call on both Commissioner Williams-Cox and Commissioner Matlow for some comments. Commissioner Williams-Cox, will you please start us?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just start by saying thank you. Thank you to this community who is still believing and still dreaming and willing to work. When the people have a mind to work and they're willing to work, great things will happen. I am looking forward to working with each and every one of you to make those great things happen. Thank you. Thank you for this great opportunity to serve. I want to say thank you to my husband, my high school sweetheart. We're celebrating our 33rd anniversary. We're going on cruise next month. And I want to thank my sons for being here. One is still at work and one is here, and my grandchildren, and all of you. My sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And all of my other sisters and brothers in the other colors. We welcome you to join in, and let's continue to move our city forward. Tallahassee Strong, Tallahassee Proud, let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to be here after a contentious election season, and I know we're all excited to just not have to hear any more campaigning for a little bit. So I just want to start by thanking my family, my wife Sarah, who's been with me since we graduated high school, and, you know, the first person I asked expressed interest in running to office too, and she didn't even look at me like I was crazy, and she's been supportive this entire time. So thank you for everything. To my son Declan, the four-year-old redhead, you've probably seen around, he's been my campaign manager, making sure we did the right things and where we were supposed to go. To my son Ethan, who picked a pretty convenient time to be born, a month before an election. You know, but our family as a whole is just genuinely excited about serving this city and taking us where we think we need to go. To the outgoing commission, Mayor Gillum, thank you for your leadership in representing Tallahassee on both the state and the national level. Tallahassee's such a great community, and you really represented that and showed who we are in the face of a lot of adversity and a lot of tweets that probably shouldn't have been talked about with us. Commissioner Ziffer, I don't think we've seen eye to eye on every issue, but I've always appreciated your leadership, looking out for our neighborhoods and looking out for the issues that really matter to you and to our community. And, you know, hopefully, moving forward, you know, we'd be honored to have a body that is passionate about municipal government, as you've been. Commissioner Miller, this is a nice seat. Thank you for everything. You know, you've always been someone that we could go to, and you really would talk through an issue and really listen to our ideas, and I've always respected that. I know Commissioner Lightsey is in the audience too, so we've got some big shoes to fill here, but I'm looking forward to being able to do it and serving our community. Commissioners Maddox and Richardson, I'm glad you guys know what you're doing, because...
Your leadership...
It's great to have... It's great to have two well-experienced commissioners up here, you know, and I think together we're going to do a lot of great things. Mayor Daly, we've gotten to know each other over the campaign. I can probably tell your whole pitch, so I'm looking forward to hearing you say different things other than, for the last 12 years. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you're not new to this, you're true to this, and, you know, I appreciated your campaign and, you know, just looking forward to serving with you. And then I just want to thank the City of Tallahassee, to be somebody who come from my background, being raised by a single mother, a poor and poverty on the south side of the city, and to being able to achieve my dreams and have the opportunity to serve what I think is one of the best cities in the nation, and to be up here to sit in this chair, it means a really lot to be given that opportunity, and I really appreciate that. And I look forward to everyone who put their faith in me and their trust in me to stand up for our neighborhoods and everyday working people, that I got your back, and I'm looking forward to serving you. We'll be declaring office hours as soon as we get into the office. My door's open, come and talk to me. And with that, thank you.
Cheers.
And I miss somebody. Dominique Roberts, my sister, from my first campaign video, fame of, you know, putting herself out there and really telling her story. You know, I love you, and I appreciate you being here.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think I've ever heard Jeremy say so many words. But one of the things that he did do was that he made me realize I left some people out as well.
Uh-oh.
I have my aunt, this is my dad, stand-up Ann Eliza, this is my daddy's sister. For those of you who remember my previous campaigns, my daddy is in heaven, but he did all he could before he went there to make this happen. And so she is here representing our family, the Williams family, and my mother could not be here, she lives in Hartford, Connecticut, and my uncle, Ernest Brown, from Jacksonville, Florida, is here representing my mother's side of the family. And of course, you all know my pastor. Y'all know my pastor, the Reverend Dr. R.B. Holmes Jr.
That's my pastor too.
That's your pastor too. Our pastor. And then I have my cousins, my family, won't you just stand up? My cousins from Quincy, y'all know we're from Quincy, y'all come on, stand up, let everybody see us. My sister and my brother-in-law. My cousin's pointing out somebody. Who? I said my sister. My sister, Pamira. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I think that's all. Is there any other member of my family? All my family stands, please. Everybody in my family stands. Thank you, thank you. I think that's it, Mayor. Dr. Emma Johnson, of course, you know, I'm standing on her shoulders. So I have to say that. I'm standing on her shoulders, and you all know what that means. It means a lot. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, any comments?
I'm sitting up here reflecting. I first got sworn in when I was 24. Jim English swore me in, and he was old back then.
Oh, my goodness.
And I made fun of him this whole time, and then Lucielle Porteleu after Jim retired, and then when Commissioner Richardson was talking about the tradition of the commission, he basically said, "I'm the oldest guy up here, and that's why they're going to make me the Mayor Pro Tem." So I thought it was Jim English's revenge. Just a few words to the outgoing commissioners. I spoke from my heart at the last meeting, but I'm going to miss you dearly, and we traveled a lot of ground together, and I learned so much from y'all, and you worked very hard for your constituents, and I'm going to miss you dearly. I know you're not going anywhere. I'm just going to miss you up here. I know Mayor Gillum has left the building, but he... I helped him in his first campaign, and I think we had a special relationship, and still have a special relationship, and he has done so much for Tallahassee that it cannot be overlooked or overstated, what he's done for our city, and I appreciate him very much. Mayor Marx, who followed me as mayor, he got here a little late, so he didn't get recognized, and I want to make sure that... Thank you very much for your service. And Anita Favors, who raised me, Mayor Marx, and Andrew Gillum, in a political sense, thank you very much for everything. I wanted to recognize my aide, Ally Fleming. Where is she? She's somewhere working, in the corner, who works so very hard, and without her, I could not do my job. And I know that Melissa Ingram and Kathy and Jamie Van Pelt and all the folks in the mayor's office, you'll find out that those are the folks that put in the real long hours for constituents. Thank you very much for your hard work. And finally, to my new colleagues, this is going to be a lot of fun. I can tell already. I can tell already. Each one of us brings a little bit something different to the table, and isn't that what it's supposed to be about? So we have a city that doesn't have single-member districts and always elected citywide people of diversity, and not just diversity of background, not just diversity of color, not just diversity of religion, but diversity of thought. And from the days of James Ford until today, we continue to bring that. Our electorate brings that to this table, term after term after turn, and every time it results in the betterment of our city. I'm proud to sit up here with you, and I look forward to the exciting things that you're going to do in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to, you know, I came in midway through Commissioner then and then Mayor Gillum's term. I finished out the last two years of his term, and then this city saw fit to elect me for a full four-year term to the commission, and it's been a ride. I was fortunate to have had a relationship with each of the commissioners before I came. I had served on the Economic and Environmental Consensus Committee with Commissioner Miller, knew Commissioner Ziffer and his wife, and my wife, served as models for gapers, so we both married up. And got to know Commissioner Gillum, Commissioner then, when he was running for office as a student at Florida A&amp;M University. And I can tell you, we have accomplished a lot as a commission over these last four years. Without their leadership, I don't know that the City of Tallahassee would be where she is today, twice-designated an All-America City, with a great staff, a great set of appointed officials that we've had the great fortune to work with, and 2,800 of just the most absolute best employees that a municipal government could ever have. You know, we... You know, we, you know, we take the credit, you know, we get the cameras and microphones pointed in our faces, but they are the heroes and sheros that every day get up despite the circumstances and make this city be the city that she is today, the shining city on the hill, the capital of the third largest state in the nation. And we are proud of the city in which we live. You know, as a student at Florida State University, whenever you come here, you always think, "Man, I can't wait to graduate and get the hell out of Tallahassee." I thought that too, 45 years ago, and here I am, still here. My wife and I, Judge Nina Ashenafi Richardson, chose to make Tallahassee our home. And to raise our family here, and I've, you know, it's interesting, Mr. Mayor, because I knew your dad.
Absolutely.
And so knew the Daly family for years, have worked in the community with Diane, and seen all the good work that she's done on a volunteer basis throughout this community. You know, people ask me, "Curtis, when do you sleep?" But I do get sleep, but I have to wonder, "Diane, when do you sleep?" And she does it, she was doing it for free, volunteering. And I've had the great fortune of getting to know Jeremy during this campaign, and I tell you, his story just touched my heart. And I think that if anybody deserves to be here, Jeremy, you certainly do. And so congratulations. Congratulations to each of you for the confidence that this city has shown in you. We look forward to working with you and continuing to move Tallahassee forward and to make it a community that all of us, regardless of our zip code or the quadrant of the city that we live in, that we can be proud to call it home and call her the All-America City that she is. So I look forward to working with you all, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. A few comments. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here today. It means the world to the three of us that were sworn in, and to Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Richardson as well. This is a special occasion. Sometimes we take this for granted as a society, but we celebrate in America the transition of power from one commission to another, and it is a day of celebration. I too want to personally recognize Mayor Gillum, Commissioner Ziffer, Commissioner Miller, for 32 years collectively serving the citizens of Tallahassee. That is, that is very impressive, and I have thoroughly, on a personal note, enjoyed serving with each and every one of you collectively, representing Leon County as well. I want to congratulate my friends, Commissioner Williams Cox and Commissioner Matlow. We have gotten to be good friends. It's funny, on the campaign trail, and Jeremy's right, you could probably give my speech, I can give your speech, you get to know somebody very intently on the campaign trail. I have thoroughly enjoyed the campaign trail, and I am very excited about serving with both of you. Commissioner Richardson, you do have a very special place, you are the only one on this body that has actually served in three different branches of government. You started your career on the school board with my father.
Yes.
And you have served us with honor in the Florida House of Representatives, and now as a City Commissioner. You bring a lot of experience to the table that, quite frankly, we will be depending on. Commissioner Maddox, I've worked on every single, you're older than me. I've worked on every campaign of yours and have always dreamt about the day when I could serve on the same body with you, and I am looking forward to that. I don't mind telling you, Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Maddox, I will be the first to say, and it's been mentioned before, we will be looking to you for your guidance, for your experience. You have been here, you know these issues, but I think we're going to have a dynamic city commission, and I am honored and pleased to sit in the position and serve as your mayor, and I'm looking forward to move forward. I want to take a point of personal privilege and recognize my family, and my entire family is here. We have a small family, but our entire family is here. First of all, I want to recognize my mother, Sarah Ann Daly, if you'll please stand. My brother Charlie, my sister-in-law Sharon, my nephew John Scott, Will, Preston, and Lawson, will you all please stand to be recognized as well? In town from Williamsburg, Virginia, my sister Scotty Daly Boyd, my nephew Joe, and the crown jewel amongst all these Daly boys, my niece Caroline, please stand to be recognized. And of course, my wife Jenny Daly, and my boys Tommy and Henry. Tommy, Henry, stand up and give a wave, come on, there you go. Jeremy, I think between the Daly boys and the Matlow boys, this chamber is about to, for the next four years, get a little rowdy every now and then with the kids running around, and that's going to be just fine. I cannot tell you how thankful, as a citizen, but also as an elected official, the opportunity to be able to work with each and every one of you. We've got the most dynamic staff, we have incredible men and women that work for the city of Tallahassee, and I am excited to be working with everyone here, and thank you for what you do for this city and for this community. I had a formal speech written, but let me just simply say, thank you for putting your faith in me to be the next mayor of the city of Tallahassee. And I know I speak for each one of us up here, that we are going to work every day as hard as we possibly can to do the very best job that we possibly can collectively to be able to move our community forward, because in our hearts of hearts, we believe in that, and that is why we ran, and that is why we serve. And I love the dynamics up here, and this is going to be an amazing commission, because I said it on the campaign trail, day in and day out, it is not my city, it is not just your city, it is our city. And it's important for all of us to come to the table, to grab the pen, and to write the next chapter for the city of Tallahassee. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve. Without further ado, to provide us with the benediction, I would like to invite Pastor Brad Clayton, my minister from Faith Presbyterian Church, please can provide the benediction for this evening. Reverend Clayton.
Let us pray. God of grace, you can stand if you like. God of grace and God of love, we give you thanks this day for these public servants who have dedicated their lives to helping others. Each moment that they serve, we ask that you will stand by their side, giving them wisdom and courage, endurance and care, humility and grace for their work. When they face challenges, give them the patience to listen. When their opinions differ, help them to find common ground. When they get frustrated, fill them with compassion for those in need. But most of all, God, we pray that their work will inspire each of us to serve as well. Inspire us to help our neighbors in need. Inspire us to take action when we see someone hurting. Inspire us to make Tallahassee a better place with our words and our deeds. We pray this with gratitude for all that we have and with hope for a stronger future together. In the name of the one who created us and loves us eternally, we pray. Amen.
Mr. Mayor, is there any more business before the city commission today?
No, sir.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to remind everyone that there's a reception in the Meszine level right outside. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, December 5th. We stand adjourned.